Coming the agenda that's on our iPad is the agenda we're going forward with, right?
The book, I put the agenda that had was a little more filled out than he passed around. In the book, well, this is a little bit smaller. And your books will say like, um, the sections like one A, one B. So if you'll, that matches up to your agenda. One being overview, A being strategic plan, and B.
You do your best to try to organize this, don't you?
Sometimes it's futile to ask.
It's a challenge.
I'll start with a little anecdote that I was helping Paul Dufer put together some history for his upcoming show in March. And I was trying to dig up some old photographs of Dad and the play. And I ran into a cannonball from 1973.
Cannonball was the paper?
It was the paper, prior to the Gazette, it was called the Cannonball. And the headline, "Short-Term Rendles Baffled Council."
What year was that?
I think it's three or four. There's the first screw just in the paper, that's why we kept it. Kind of cute. Short-term rentals.
I don't know anybody that's satisfied with their policy or that residents are happy with, you know.
So, shall we call order? The council retreat, Saturday, January 13th. We have an agenda, we have all seen it, so I'm assuming we're all good with it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll jump right into the first overview, which is the first item, which will be the strategic plan. Bruce, do you want to start on any comments, you have the strategic plan?
I'd be very interested in hearing y'all's comments. I don't know if today's the day to do it, but looking at some of these things, I don't necessarily have the context of the decisions that were made, but there are some things that I think from the staff standpoint that we could potentially accelerate. And for example, emergency management. I have, we had put together a, a plan from, again, this is dealing with hurricanes, from 72 hours before to two years after. And most of that is adaptable to, I think, everything except the real subduction here. If it's a long-range tsunami, that kind of thing, it would absolutely cover it. And so, I'll be working with staff on putting that in. And there's a certain amount of this, you know, self-resiliency, but the real heavy lifting gets done by others with our coordination, so, so that's one. Another is that I'm not sure if we need a dedicated program manager. I think that with my background with Stacy on board, that we'll be able to go, we'll cover that without putting as well as anyone. And I think I really want to accelerate the redundant IT system, off-site servers, not for everything that we do, but for our critical functions, so that we can set up. And one of the things that can happen is that if you lose your facilities, there are companies that will come in in like 48 hours, 72 hours, with essentially modulators with computers in them, all wired, everything. So if you have a way to connect to the servers, then you're in business to be able to go ahead and do permanence or whatever it is that needs to happen. Your finance department needs to be set up, all those kinds of things. So those are the kind of, what we want to do is go ahead and get contracts as well as in place. So, but it does require a server off-site, way off-site.
So if this is part of the strategic plan, are you putting a date that you want to get this done?
Well, no, not yet. I'm saying I want to, we're still working on this, and we're working with Rusty on doing that because there's a lot of things can happen or be better if we get this done. Then we can start talking about the contractors that come in for housing or whatever, whatever it will be. Yeah, and I think that the long-term disaster recovery plan will be part of what I'm talking about. So that may happen before 2021. There's one here that says, under infrastructure, says December 31st, 2017, a rolling five-year Cannon Beach capital plan will be in place, including rolling stock and equipment. We're anticipating quite a bit of a different process this year on budget and with me, you know, coming up to speed and those kind of things. So I would prefer to move that out to 1819 because I'd rather not put that on top of, layer that on top of anything else that he might be trying to do, but we can plan for it, so.
What do you mean by rolling stock?
Cars, cars trucks. And then it says, by September 31st, 2019, the water supply is seismically resilient. That will depend on what we come up with from the rate structure, because the rate structure doesn't allow that to happen for a number of years, as it is right now. But Lori's doing a really good job working with the state of Oregon, because they've got a pretty good plan for funding infrastructure and things, so we may be able to go ahead and work within that and then move the tanks up, because that's one of the, when I'm talking to Jim, he says that's our biggest weakness, is that if something happens to the tanks, we really don't have the volume or the pressure to storage or the pressure to be able to go ahead and serve the city. So that, again, I mean, from a threat standpoint, I think that that's one that should be moved, you know, way up. But we'll look at that from the funding standpoint and all that, but we take this particular in various areas. And I think at some point we'll have discussion on the last one on that page, saying utility operations, maintenance, and capital will be fully supported by the rate payers.
Bruce, a question on the resiliency that we currently have. Is the, is, is our supply currently resilient to any particular level of earthquake?
Whatever it was, I think it was in the 70s is when they were built, so whatever the seismic requirements were then. Yeah, okay, it probably were not, I see that that's it, yeah. And then, so essentially, we were built in a time that wasn't really taken seriously. So, that's.
Because, you know, in thinking about what, what the geologist and what had been predicted for the area, if the earthquake happens that is anticipated for this area, there won't be need for much water.
Understood, but there can also be a lot of smaller events. No, I mean, the big one we really can't, we can't plan for, but there's, there's going to be things that are going to happen that are smaller, and it would be a shame to have like a relatively small earthquake and then lose our water system. So, but, you know, the big one, you're absolutely correct. And that's with all the planning that, you know, I told you, was kind of be a takeoff from what we did with hurricanes, is going to be a long-distance anomaly, you know, because it's not going to change the landscape. Well, it's going to change the structures, everything else, but we'll still have something to build on. So that's, but if the subduction happens, then, you know, what I'm talking about is, you know, it's taking us to go ahead and watch it happen, you know. So anyway, the relationships with community, we guys feel good, because it went from, if you wanted to get to 45, and it went from 35 to 46, and then the overall direction of city government stayed at 37, 37.
That'll be improved with the kind of public meetings you're talking about, so they can understand what the direction is. I think a big part of that was just communication, so that'll be covered.
Yeah, and I think our first one is Tuesday night, then we got another one, you know, after that. And we're still setting up with the chamber, you know, the lodging people, whoever wants to go ahead and come to that and base it on their, their schedules. So those are just some comments on that. The HR professional, one for 31st, 2016. Right now Lori handles it, and it is too much, but I think if we could possibly restructure some of what goes on in finance, we might be able to get somebody with some skills for that, because we don't need, you know, we don't need a staff office, but we need somebody that's going to go ahead and follow the things.
You know, that was always a problem, couldn't justify a full-time employee just in HR. Somebody had the skills for that and another function in the office that provides full-time employment was difficult. Although they can be trained, but that's, training for HR, the greatest part of this experience.
Yeah, yeah, and then also, I'm looking and I would like to see over time Lori get more straight-up accounting help. That I think she could do. Her function would improve if we had that, so maybe by combining the position and doing some training, because really HR's, I'm sorry, Lori's not a HR professional either, so it's just, you know, making sure all the things are done. And so if we can have somebody that can learn, you know, just take that off of Lori's plate and then be an accountant too, that's one that, it would probably keep us even on the, or maybe a little bit better if the person has more time than Lori does. So I think that the HR side would be better and then the accounting side would be better. But if I, if we only could get one function, I would want more accounting.
Yep. So Bruce, who would, who would take that?
I'm not sure, there might be, you know, like if there was a
But an existing, an existing staff?
I don't see anybody on the existing staff. So, but if there was a vacancy or if there was something we could do to move some people around or something, then, then that might happen.
So you look at it as a part-time position?
No, I would look at it as a full-time position, because it would be part, maybe 25, 30% HR, and then the rest of it accounted.
But it would be, it would be an additional employee?
Possibly, unless there was a vacancy, then we could go ahead and look at it. We might not get quite as far as if we had an additional employee, but we could make it better.
And this is something that we put on here, this is before you arrived. Is this something that you agree with? Do you see this need?
Yeah, no, absolutely, and what I'm seeing is the combined need where it happens to be tied, so we can make that, we'll find a way to make that work. It might take some time, so I don't know if we can put a timestamp on it, but it'll be when the opportunity arises, we can go ahead and address it. Unless you all want to put a timestamp on it, then, you know, it might
Well, we've tried putting timestamps on it, and we typically fail to meet our timelines. Primarily, I think, because when we did it, we're all sitting in our room, and we just came up with the thought and then put an arbitrary time. There'd been no analysis of how long it would take to do it, but it gave you a target to shoot for. And some we made, some we didn't. As we're talking overview on strategic planning, I guess I have a question. I, I think we had a good plan. We succeeded in some of them. They certainly focused on areas we needed to address. And when we do our next, this is our plan, if we do our plan, I'd recommend, and we'd be expecting, to go through the current strategic plan and make adjustments to each of those items as we go. Somebody may decide that things have changed, we don't even need that, or we have succeeded, and it can be dropped out of the plan as we add new things. But what we've done in the past was have a kind of a mid-year report and say, well, here's the objectives, department by department, that were addressing some of these. And here was our, our goal, here's where we are, we're six months behind, we haven't started, or it's completed. And if we don't do that and keep track of what our objectives were, where we stand, and where we're going, then strategic planning has no role. So I just, as we talk about overview, I'd like to make sure that we address those at some point through this planning process and update them and come up with new ones.
What is our procedure for, for the strategic plan as far as updating? It's not a document that we have to have any hearings on, it's not something we even have to formalize in a vote or, how do we make changes to it, I guess?
Well, that's why we do it every two years, and that was the assumption, you know, every two years you revise it.
We do that, basically, what we're doing today, it's just a retreat we have where we, you know, go through
It's going to be a little more intense, I think, because this time we were gonna, we've got the survey now, we've got the information from that, this time we're going to add some public input.
Bruce, if I can, I'd like, I really don't know how things had operated here before, but I would like to have more interaction with, with council. And I know that I'm probably over-talking this thing, because one of the first things you and I agreed to was that we're not going to go ahead and get into everything. So that's the first thing I did on the first one. But to actually sit down with this, you know, possibly with some, with some staff information, and then go through it, and then find out what, you know, just talk a little bit more about what's possible, what's really, you know, what's critical, what's not, those kinds of things. And then staff goes back and goes ahead and works on it, does some research, finds out how long it's going to take, what's it going to be to go ahead and get servers set up someplace. And then we can talk about timeframes, budget impacts, that kind of thing, so that the strategic plan is tied to, you know, the department's operational plan is tied to the budget. And because if we don't budget for these, you know, it doesn't matter how much, you know, scrambling around we do. And there might be some that we just can't afford to do right now. And so from a strategic point, we actually move them out, you know, based on the real, the reality of the situation, so. And again, what we, what Sam had suggested is to try to just decide what, what do we want to take up? And then probably do a special, you know, special workshop. And this is definitely one that I would like to see happen, you know, probably over the next two, three months while we're talking about budget and things. But, but again, I think the first phase would be to sit down with staff, talk about it, maybe narrow it down a little bit, and then we come back and say, all right, this is realistically, this is what it's going to take, if we budget it or not, do we have time or not, do we have staff or not?
Colleen?
I was just going to say that the inner, when Jason was there, he had all the department heads update the strategic plan, that was in November. And so some things had been finished, and some things they had to rearrange the dates, and because they either passed or it's obvious it was no funding or whatever, and so that information is available. But the other thing about the strategic plan, you adopted it by vote, and when you adopted it, it was that document, and I think it has dates in it, so if you change the dates, I would imagine you have to re-adopt. If you, you know, so it wouldn't be just a little million, let's change the dates. You'd agree on it, it might take a while, and then you would adopt again the new dates, or somehow you've got to address, you know, the fact that you adopted those dates.
And that should be a separate session, not today.
Oh, yeah. And actually, my assumption is we're going to start looking for somebody like Eric to come and do it for us, and it will be a consultant process. I would be more curious as to see how this fits in our schedule for this year. Is it necessary before the budget? That's too tight. I don't think we can do that, to have it done by that by May. So I think spreading it out throughout the year, figuring out where that's going to go. We just need to be cognizant of it for our schedule for this year, because there are a bunch of other things that we want to talk about.
Yeah, and I think, and you're right, but I think if we can have at some point, maybe it's just during a workshop or something, where we can talk about, right, these are the ones we want in the budget this year, so that we can go ahead and do that research, and then have the longer-term part of the strategic plan, you know, happen later. But we don't want to get to the first one.
Okay. Just a question, I think, I'm sure you, I hope you've seen this, but previously, each department, we took the strategic plan, and each department went through with city manager as to which ones they had responsibility for. So if there was one of the primaries that was in the, in the cover, and they looked at what kind of had to be done, who the team leaders were, and periodically they would give us a report on where they were. And that's for each of the items in this strategic plan. So I suspect, and I'm pretty sure, most departments are following this kind of program, and some of them probably haven't touched them yet, at least not every aspect. But that's something that we can follow up with, with department heads, and get a current status on where they are.
That's, that's what everybody would be doing, yeah.
It's done in November, so, and I guess you probably have it, but this is their guideline.
Well, since the strategic plan is obviously a guiding, a guiding light for a lot of the conversations we're going to have for the rest of the day, I would suggest that we move on to those conversations, because we'll be coming back to the strategic plan in those.
Good job, George, next item. One more thing. And then we'll come up. The survey, comments on the survey?
I went over it last night, and it, you know, it was very similar to the last one. And a couple of things that we had said in our strategic plan to accomplish, we accomplished one of those, and the other one, we kind of were flat, we got the same rating on the direction of government. I said this last time, and I think it's so true, is that so much of people's sense of government is toward the federal government and the state government and all government, and is not necessarily, you know, Cannon Beach. I think there's a whole, there's a very strong influence on what people see in the news in terms of their attitude toward government, and they don't see a lot of Cannon Beach news.
Yeah, one of, I guess, I have of it is, I think it was interesting to note where we changed from two years ago, and I thought that baseline was very good to have, that George commented, we actually met some of our goals by improving. It's identified merits where we haven't, but I think Bruce is going to be addressing the direction of the city. To me, the, the most valuable part was answering the special topics.
Answering the what?
Answering the special topics, like for how the community center, watershed acquisition. But I don't, I guess I'm not feeling, I was supportive of the whole process. Now we have a baseline, and we've seen what we're moving, I'm not sure that we need to do it again, at least for some time, that's just my personal view, but I think if we don't do it again, we've got to at least address the ability to survey the community on some of the things we're going to be talking about this year on special projects. I, to me, that's a valuable survey question, valuable communication with the citizens, but how they feel about traffic and all the, what we're doing with garbage and recycling, those, I think we know that now. We know, I mean, there's some areas that were terrible, but we're still better than the average, you know? And our some areas were really quite, quite high, but then so is everybody. So finding those differences, I think, was valuable. We've identified those now with the spread, and it may be warranted in a few years to do another national survey, but my, my recommendation would be that we don't do the national citizen survey again for a while, but that we find a way to supplement this survey on special topics that we'll be addressing.
We just do our own?
Yeah. Well, whether we do it ourself or we identify the questions, but let an independent, non-biased organization actually do the survey, it's something for future discussion, but.
Hi, I don't know if anybody here, Colleen, do we have any idea of Stacy's survey and how it?
They got all due in until the 20th.
Okay, so we won't know?
For the vulnerable population, that.
But they are coming in, we're getting
Oh, yes, they're giving good input.
We're over 30% now.
There's a good model right there. The effort you put into it.
Yep.
I agree with Mike, I think if you do this every year, people are going to ignore it, they won't fill it out every year, that's too big of a task, and we don't need the information every year, so I think, you know, we, maybe should, in a year from now, we should, you know, revisit it and think, okay, should we do it in a year, do it now, or push it off further? I think it is valuable, that's information that we wouldn't have been able to get any other way. We can all guess what the results would be, but now we have, you know, we have some data that, you know, is, is real, so.
So are we talking about identifying certain questions that we want to keep researching and identifying those and then kind of do a survey ourselves?
I think, I think we're, we'll go ahead, Mike.
No, well, that's kind of the way I'm viewing it, and we will identify some of these through today's activities in the next cycle on the strategic plan, do it with a moderator. If we, if, particularly those are going to be the capital items. You know, if we'd said, are you in favor of a south wind, and it's going to cost $2 million of your tax money, which will require an increase, I guess it's spring and holler, and an $8 increase in the water bill, I was talking about, we go out and finance all these projects. So we can be more specific in our own survey, and I just gave an example, but we may, if we have more community meetings, we may not even need that survey, but I think there is still good value. I'm thinking as we acquired the watershed, the 800 acres at the time, that was, there was a lot of communication done at the time, there was a survey on what you'd like, well, I forgot it, a survey on how you'd like to manage, and we've got a really valid input. So I think that is a valuable exercise, as we have specifics to ask the community to respond to, rather than these more general topics on how are we doing as a government.
And not that they, I think Bruce here has, or they're repeating the same questions, and I would say they would be whatever is pertinent at that time, you know, where there's things that we want feedback from the community, and a lot of people who have a strong feeling and would voice themselves don't make it to the meetings, you know, but they still would, you know, care to have their two cents. So if we get a survey, and even email surveys, you know, would be valuable. Most, most everybody now is doing email, so I think we should definitely survey people, but not necessarily this national citizen survey.
But see, even if there's certain questions out here that you feel it's valuable information, you just, as part of the survey, you repeat them, because you do have a baseline.
Sure.
So, but if you change the questions, it changes the results, so.
There's a few, I think, you know, community engagements are
Yeah, some of them are probably, we include those in addition.
And I'm hearing that maybe late this year or early next year, 19, thinking about really focusing on a new survey. We were going to do these every two years, and I think every two years, or unless there's a project coming up that maybe we want some more information, so, okay.
One of the things in the survey that I noticed or focused on was the fact that I think 90-some percent of our, of our citizens surveyed are volunteering, and that's the sense I've had, and we, we very well tapped our volunteers.
It's actually 60%.
What was it?
Yeah, 60% are volunteering, yeah.
That's still amazing.
But still. But still.
It's amazing, man. The city runs on volunteers, basically.
I thought it was, I mean, I thought it was interesting to note that all we did to promote the Spanish-speaking survey, and have it online, and had it, had things translated into Spanish, and posted around. We did, not say that any Hispanic people didn't fill it out in English, but no one filled out the Spanish version of our survey. I thought that was rather, I don't know how we can work on our outreach more, but there is a significant population here.
Get Jeanne involved in that one.
Well, she had good translations and everything, and she got the word out. And anyway, it's just something to keep in mind, too, that we're not getting that input.
It's also a cultural message that we might want to be aware of, is that they don't like filling things out, because it could be a threat to them. So I don't know.
That could be.
Something to look into. Okay, you're good on that one?
I was surprised that we had, I think we had a slight, somewhat of an increase of people who thought we had really good preschool and childcare over the last time. Last time, we still had the children's center. This time, we don't, we don't.
I don't think we had.
Children's center just closed on the last one.
Okay, so.
Now we've got this in place.
So, but they said preschool, and I'm going, childcare and preschool, and I thought, okay, and where would that be?
The Christian Conference Center.
Maybe that's it, yeah. But I was really surprised we had that increase in that.
Maybe more people are using it.
Maybe.
And there could be a lot of people that don't even understand the academy, and what level of kids they're taking care of.
Yeah, could be that, could be.
That's what I read, is before we just shut down, and everybody was upset about all that. Now, here's one just started up, and I was positive about that. Whether it covered the specifics.
But education was still pretty, real low. K through 12 education, 19%. Childcare, at least 13%.
You know, a figure I didn't see in here was, how many people responded this time versus last time? Was that shared anywhere?
It said 360, and it said 360 residents. Now, did they mean households, or, because it says residents, I.
Well, the instructions were just that one that had the birthday closest is something.
So it's households, basically.
One household.
One certainly for household, yeah.
Yeah, 360 households, yeah.
But it was, what was the number last year, or last time?
It was, it was over 40%, but I don't remember what the numbers were. And so I, and I don't remember seeing.
So do we know, was our response better or worse than last time?
I don't know, I'd have to look it up on the website. We've got both results on the website, last start and this, you could check it out on there. I don't, I don't off the top of my head.
Time to survey? Next topic is one that Tammy asked us to make sure that we're good with our rules of procedure. Because we went through that last time. Every year, make sure that everyone understands, or has learned that there's some changes that we want to make, or discovered a problem with the system.
I read through them last night again, and there was one thing that I, that appeared as missing, that appears to be missing. And that's under the executive session, the reasons, we got, it's six reasons. We don't have real property.
Yeah.
You got that, too?
Yeah, and I don't know, other than other business that is provided by ORS, and I didn't go and look at that.
I didn't either.
And then one for transaction of property.
If that's what it is.
The one is transaction of property that would be in.
The ORS.
Yeah, that's it. So we don't need to mention it, then? It's covered, or?
If that's it, yeah, I just, I didn't go looking up it. It's got to be it, because.
It's probably a catch-all.
I want to ask Tammy if it.
We could review that, because I know there is one that's real, that's the one that, I think it's an H, I thought it was an H. But anyway, we can check that. I'll make a note.
That was the only thing that I saw here that I didn't feel, or that I wouldn't bring up. Everything else seems to be working fine.
Well, it was amended last year or something. Yeah, this was back in March 2017, so.
Bruce has some ideas, so, because he's new to this one, so.
Yeah.
What do you say?
All right. First of all, I would like to ask if the, it says in here that the city manager.
Can you just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just where you're talking from?
Um, let me see, where is it? It's on page four. Well, it's under the city manager part, it was 2.12. Starts on page, bottom of page three, and goes to four. But the last line says, "The city manager shall keep or cause to be kept the official minutes of the city council meetings." And what I would like the board to consider is what I call action minutes. Because in our minutes now, if the city manager is talking as much as he is in this meeting, it would be, you know, everything that I said. But if the board decided at the end, no, we're not going to do something, or yes, we are going to go ahead and make this change, that's really the critical item. What we all said in it, doesn't really matter. And I've never had, I've had many situations where I had to go back to the minutes to find out what was decided, but I never went back to find out what, what somebody said, you know, as part of the discussion. Because frankly, it doesn't matter. Like, if, if, if I'm dead set against an item, I can vote against it, but the fact that I talked about it for 10 minutes doesn't really make any difference down the road. And what happened, what the benefit is that we have Colleen, Jen, and Samantha are all doing minutes for all the committees, and for the board, and everything. And to me, I think we could pick up some time for them to be doing other things. So it would be a change in the minutes. You know, people might like to read what everybody was saying, and it won't. They'll say, you know, the, the item was introduced by the mayor, discussion ensued, you know, councilman Ogilvy made a motion, seconded by Better, approved for one, you know, whatever. And that, you know, that would be the result.
And frankly, that's all that's required for minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Colin?
I think, in all my dreams, I always would be needing a gist of the meeting, a gist of what, so.
But yeah, so, but it's less than, it's semi-verbal.
Well, then we already have a recording, if you want to listen to it.
Exactly, because you could always go back to what was said by the recorder.
Well, as long as we're not talking about doing away with the recording at all, which I'm sure not, then, yeah, I'm fine with that.
But I don't see a need to change the wording in here. It's just a matter of changing or giving direction to staff as to what the minutes should include.
And we don't describe what the minutes are, we just say the minutes, so.
No, I'm, I'm good.
And maybe at the next meeting, you know, when we get to order, I'll just say something that, you know, this is something that I'm requesting, this is why, and if the board gets consensus, then we did it in another public meetings. We'll have two public meetings, even though it's here, but that this was discussed.
What do you mean, no one's here?
I'm sorry.
Brent's here.
The ears and mouths of the public are sitting right back here.
Also probably the only one that reads the minutes.
No, I, no, I tell you, no, people look in there for the train wreck, you know, that's a good one. So, anyways, all right, good, okay, so, and then I'll just bring that up. Next one is to try to get some, you know, it's, it's a short one, the, I'm sorry. In order to be able to focus on the heavy stuff in the meeting, if the board would consider, again, a consent agenda on things that, if you read it, and you're okay with it, then, you know, that's fine. Anything, anybody, any one individual can pull it off, and then it'll go on the agenda. But there might be things that we can put on to, that don't need to be talked about, that, you know, again, that might help us to go ahead and have time to focus on other things.
To have it presented at the meeting, here's the consent agenda.
There's the item.
So the public's seen what that consent agenda is.
And all the materials are in the pack.
Good.
And so what you're doing is you're reading, and if you're okay with it, then, you know, just, you know, pass the consent agenda, or you can pull in any item.
Give me an example of what would be on consent agenda.
Colin, I mean, usually what we would have is if there was, well, obviously, you know, minutes you could have on. Yeah, and contracts. You know, like, so if there's a contract for, you know, a generator, or a design, a small design project, or something like that, you read it, you understand it, and then it can be on the consent agenda. You know, and it may not make a big difference, because, you know, there might not have been a lot of discussion on it. But the idea is that we can try to go ahead and identify those items, thread them, you can approve them, and then we can.
All at one time?
Yes.
The package kind of in one bullet point. And then if you had a problem with any one item, you could call it out.
Yeah, pull it on. And you don't, and you don't talk about it that. What happens is it goes onto the agenda. So that's, I mean, that's like a control thing, because otherwise, every one, if one got pulled, then they all start getting talked about. It's like, I want to pull agenda, you know, item 2A. Okay, thank you. Starts at the end of the meeting, at the end of the agenda. Then somebody makes a motion for the rest of the consent agenda. Not a big deal, you might not even see it that often, but I think that we're going to be having, let me see, I'm going to be advocating more minutes, perhaps having more meetings. And also, I really want to see the council and staff and committees working together, you know, more like this, so that, like, when Mike was talking about the strategic plan, I'd like there to be a couple of discussions on that, so it really does get refined, so that what you want, and what I understand, or what the staff understands, is much closer than just interpretations. We talked about it, we said, by such and such a time, I'll have a person. Well, I really want to talk about that person, and to talk about staffing, and those kind of things, to get those items down. So with that, I think that I'm going to be asking for more meetings, and I think the purpose of this meeting is to kind of try to set some of those up. And I apologize, because I know your time is valuable, but.
No, it isn't, it's free.
Well, it's valuable to you, and to us. It is valuable to us. So it's just a.
Well, I've seen, of course, I've attended hundreds and hundreds of meetings in my, in my career, and I've seen consent agendas a lot in various governments. And I think, for the most part, they work pretty well. I know some people are suspicious of consent agendas, because they're afraid that you can hide things in there. But for the most part, this seems to work pretty well. I would just be very careful about what we include in the consent agenda.
Sure. Yeah, if it's, if it's going to be controversial at all, well, first of all, if we know it's going to be pulled, we won't put it on the consent agenda. And we, you know, so, well, most of the time, we have a good sense of that.
I would say let's ease it in. Mike and I are doing, are helping set up the agendas for the meetings. We can maybe start styling a few videos, and see how they read for the audience, and see how they work for us.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's that big a deal, but.
I'm trying to think of any situation we've had where, like, a whole mess of things at once.
Likely, you say, any discussion?
Nope. But it could be really handy for planning commission or design review, in some cases.
I don't know if I've seen that for planning commissions.
I don't know.
Well, I'm going to supply to them, too.
Yeah, these rules will apply to them, so, yes, we can light it out.
That's one we can ease into, but it's just whether or not we would consider it, and, you know, in working with Sam and Mike, just kind of put them in, and Sam, because, yeah, this thing, because maybe, you may see more activity, and with what, I'm hoping we'll be able to model, or we can develop, so. Which is working closer.
I'd like to back up one step to the, to the minutes, in thinking about a decision, especially appeals, I guess, that come to us from planning commission. It's valuable for me to read the discussions and get some more in-depth information. So if I didn't have minutes that talked about how the discussion involved to come up with a decision, I would want to have access to the tape.
Absolutely have access to the tape, and you do bring up a good point. I think that probably we would treat quasi-judicial differently than just the normal minutes. So there, so the stuff that you would get would be similar to what you're seeing now for that. But if it's an item that's not quasi-judicial, so it wouldn't be subject to appeal, you might not see as much, you know, if they're talking, you know.
And that's, the only time I would be concerned would be when it comes to appeal. And now, we have to make a decision on the council level, yes or no. And it's nice to get some insight into what the discussion was, and how they arrived at that decision.
Absolutely correct. And then, you're right, and I think it would be the same thing with your discussion on quasi-judicial. You would see what you normally saw.
So would you be giving, would you be giving Colleen then instructions to include the discussion?
Well, whenever you have an appeal anyway, planning gives me everything. And they give me everything that they take, and being quasi-judicial, they have a lot more minutes. And that's where you're getting all of your information. You get a staff report from Mark, which summarizes it all anyway, but we don't add much to it. I mean, I don't think you'd ever see an appeal like that on a consent agenda. And they don't, they don't, they do write up their minutes differently, because it is quasi-judicial. So you will get all of that information.
Okay, so, so when the, when the instruction about the action minutes are given to the person doing the planning commission minutes, that person will be.
They stay the same on, exactly like we're doing them now on quasi-judicial. Thanks for the question. All right. And the last one is just, it's a personal preferencer experience, is that I would suggest that at the work, at the work sessions, that the, let me see, there's a presentation by staff, the presentation by staff is done, discussion by the board, questions by the board, all that, that you normally would have. But to not have frustration, and I think in order for people to think that we're totally transparent, or they had their opportunity, and just suggesting that maybe we are a little bit more liberal, and allowing people to talk at workshops. So that's just a suggestion.
I've talked to Tammy about that, and I've always used that as kind of my call. Example would be the last work session when I asked Bob to, because he was jumping up and down on that. And I see that all the time, and I'm, okay, it can get out of hand. But if it is a, kind of like our public comment phase in the beginning of a regular meeting, maybe it might work.
And you already have the authority. At the council's discretion, public comment may be allowed if such study or workshop. And I think it's a kind of moral policy, but, and I remember at that same meeting, there was, staff was presenting the public works committee's work, and they were going crazy trying to go ahead and get an opportunity to talk. And our back was to them, so we didn't know that. But just saying, that's the kind of thing that, to avoid frustration, and show openness, that.
Well, one, I think one way to solve, not solve it, but to, to move in that direction would be to involve more people at the table. I agree with Sam, it can get out of hand if you just let people in the audience start talking. Because if you let one person talk, then if somebody else feels, well, gee, I should be able to talk too, and it's hard. Then, then if you don't let them talk, you know, they're, they're upset. So it's, it's hard to open that door without, you know, letting everybody in. But maybe we need to be more cognizant about who should come to the table, and bring more people to the table for conversations.
I've, you know, in the past, we've always asked people who are pertinent to a discussion, you know? Example, I'd be giving Nelson to bring her in to talk about tank house, or something like that. But yes, I, I think by bringing them up to the table, making them a little more formal about it, might be a way to stop the rabble-rousers in the back, because they don't like that.
Okay, so if we went back to the work session where we had the water rate study, would we have asked all of those who had been involved in the discussion as public works committee members to come to the table? I mean, because Bob was there, and I think some of the other members of the committee were there.
Yeah, I don't know if I'd have gone that far. But if some one person, example like Bob, who had a good idea, had something to say, and a lot of people agreed with him, then I'd say, okay, Bob needs to talk, bring him up, rather than letting him talk from back there, because that instigates other people just talking to him. And that kind of can lose control of the room then. But if I'd have said in that. But if I'd have said in that case, Bob, why don't you come up and sit at the table and tell us your point of view, that makes then the rest of the room realize, okay, if they want us to be, they're going to have to come up at the table. Might be a way to do it, I don't know.
Well, because in that case, the table's functioning as the dais, we don't have the dais at a work session, and so we need to, and I agree with you, Sam, I, it, there's a really difficult way to invite a small amount of participation, if people are, you know, getting agitated, so I agree with you.
And again, it's a read of the topic too, because some topics, oh, it's no big deal, they're open the room, and just say, okay, yeah, we're talking about chickens, or something like, I don't know, just something really kind of, not dull, but at least everybody's until, okay, it's not a critical, money's offensive kind of topic, but.
I think Sam's point of having them come up, even if it's, you know, just like a comment from the back of the room, because we do want it on the record, and we don't pick it up if it's way in the back, so I think that that, you know, that discipline should be there, please come up to the dais, or come up to the table.
Another thing we could do, and I agree that if we don't let people participate at all, then people aren't going to come, I mean, you know, most people don't want to just sit and watch, you know, if there's going to be some participation, there's more incentive to be there, maybe we could, you know, have everybody who comes to any work session, give them a three-by-five card, and say, you know, we're not, we're not going to have public, you're not going to be able to talk, but if you have something you want to say, put it on this card, it would be a way for people to, at least if we come to the meeting knowing they're going to have some, some way to communicate why they're there, it might bridge that, that gap of us and them.
Could work, I would, I would reserve that for bigger topics, but that could work really awesome, yeah.
And then how do we get that communication, would that be something that Colleen?
You're not making a decision at a work session, you're taking input, you're discussing things, if someone writes out a comment or something, then that should be given to you at any time, because you're not making your decision, you could be reading it perhaps later to help you formulate.
But if it's one card, I mean, does that mean it goes around the table, or do, do you read it out loud, or how do we get, how do we get that information, do you write it in the minutes, I mean, how do we get that information?
I suppose if somebody had a card, and they held it out, they could either bring it up to me, and I can then give it to everybody else, or, I don't know.
When they come in, they could be made aware that there are cards, if they have comments, please fill your card out and drop it in here, and we could gather that, we either pass them around, and again, because we're not making decisions at that point, it would be valuable to have that information then though, so I would say, I don't know, maybe at that point, copies can be made of those, and we just could get, you know, if they're three-by-five cards, you can get three or four of them on a, on a copy, and they could be put on, on a sheet, we can easily be given to comments, to have them during the meeting, I just, again, we're trying to find ways to make the people feel that we're more representing them, I guess, you know, that was a little thing in our survey, and if this is a way that that would help, it would, it would be a big inconvenience for us.
Well, we're trying to get input, we're having a general discussion, some people aren't going to have any comment until something is said, but it's recorded away through the meeting, oh crap.
Too late.
Yeah, it's too late.
Yeah.
But if they have the card, they can write that down, you can just leave it at the door, they get, Colleen picks them up, makes copies, and we just get them in a mailbox, so we at least had that input, and we're not making any decisions at that work session, we weren't trying to reach a consensus, we were gathering, getting our thoughts together, and we have the input from these cards.
But even though we're not.
Before we actually bring it up for any kind of a vote.
But it's very uncommon, in fact, I don't think it's ever happened, since I've been in work sessions for the last five years, where we actually have made a decision contrary to what the consensus was coming out of the work session, so if we don't have the input at that point, when we're, when we're actually coming to consensus, it really, it's, it's not going to have much impact.
Then you have a much more contentious meeting when you go to vote, because nobody's had the opportunity to express yet.
You'd have to go back to another work session.
Yeah, and that's.
When do you have that, I think it's awkward, when we have a published agenda, which, again, we do have at a work session, people will come, because they've seen what the agenda is, and they have something they want to say, and doing it right up front, I think captures most of any pertinent input, and by the way we're doing at the, at the meetings, get a chance to speak at the council meeting, we do the same thing at the work session, and then that's into their, their input. What I'm concerned about is, partway through it, as we're having our discussion, somebody just dying to add, or some clarification to that, how do we get that, do we have a follow-up at the very end, say, is there any additional comments?
We finish your discussion, and then when it's time, okay, we want to take, there seems to be some questions, we want to, you know, take those, and then you just take them.
And you, you take and respond to them, that's the next part.
At the end of each agenda item, or at the end of the, the whole meeting?
Each agenda item, I would do, because it is a discussion, we're not making a decision, we know that, they know that, hopefully, but, again, right back to the example, Bob came up with a whole different topic that had not come up, a whole other point on what we were talking about, and initiated another fifteen minutes of discussion, because of what he said.
Well, I know it's basically something, it was a response to something I'd said, and you'd asked me for an example, and Bob said, I can give you an example, and that's how it got started.
Right, and, you know, it was a valuable discussion at that time, so as long as it doesn't get into Bob arguing with Bob Necker, which could happen real easy, you know.
But it's your job, I mean, the mayor's job is to make, you know, and it's not.
And I've, I've caught Bob Necker several times, and said, Bob, please sit down, that kind of stuff, so you have to work on it.
And one thing to remember too, and maybe emphasize to the public, is that they do have the opportunity, they see the agenda, they do have the opportunity to send in comments, a lot of times people do, and then that's always included into your meeting, so it doesn't have to be that they have to wait until, I mean, that won't help the score-of-the-moment question, but anything that they do have a question about, they are encouraged to, you know, contact us with, or somebody writing, and we get it out to everyone.
You got to keep it from becoming a debate, or an argument, we're just gathering information, we appreciate your opinion, but we're not going to debate with you.
And that's a good point, bringing it in rather as, additional information is different than opinion, and so if somebody out there says, you know, I don't like this, you know, I don't think you should be doing that, that's an opinion, if you have facts that we can use, that's valuable.
Okay, my theory is that if people are that engaged, and they're willing to come and sit through one of our meetings, do we owe it to them to let them talk? You know, that's, that, a huge minority of people are willing to go ahead and participate, so, I think, my thought is, you better participate.
So Bruce, your thought would be that we kind of have a, set a time aside in the work session, where we let people talk, kind of like the beginning of our council meetings, is that your sense?
My, my thought is to make it meaningful, is that when we're talking about an item, and some people indicate that they want to, to speak, and maybe they do it by, you know, when you're talking about a card, fill out a card, it says, you know, I'd like to speak on item five A or something, and then they take it up to Colleen, and Colleen gets it to the mayor, and then we say, well, we have two people that have a comment, and so then he goes ahead and calls those folks up, but they had the chance to talk, we, it's kind of at the end of your discussion, where your questions and all that stuff are answered, it's not in the middle, then they do it, then if it raises anything new, fine, if it doesn't, say, thank you very much, but they weren't shut out.
So they're really not making a comment on the card, they're actually just saying they want to talk, and then we bring them to the table for their comment.
Yeah, but, and I think that it has a little bit more frammality, if they have to put down, you know, on Joe, and I want to talk about item six A, and they can turn it in before, you know, like, and then Colleen has him, and she puts him in front of the mayor, and they say, okay, well, we've got, you know, three people that have signed cards,
That way they have a name and an address, and the topic they want to talk about.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I bring something else up, since we're talking about work sessions, when we're sitting there at the table, and people come up, they come up with their backs to the audience, and I'll tell you, sitting in the audience, I imagine Brenna could even agree with this, you can't hear a darn thing that they're saying in the audience, is it possible that we could have them sit at the head of the table, so that they're not only talking to us, they're talking to the audience as well? Because, I, I mean, I, for years have tried to get people to speak up, or, you know, I have to move myself around so I can hear them, and I'm sure that lots of people, especially in the back of the room, can't hear anything, it just seems to me very impolite.
We have done that on off-and-on times, inevitably, we've got the screen up, set up somehow, so everybody then moves the chairs away, and I think it'd also be a little better if we compacted down to this, this shape, instead of those four tables, because that gets too big, and, but, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so if we could start directing people to come up to that front there, so that everybody has a chance, the only negative I see about that is, when we're asking a question, our backs will be turned somewhat, but I don't think that's a big problem, I think it's more, the presentation should be made to everybody, not just to us.
Agreed.
I agree, well, back to the cards then, do we agree then, that that would be a good procedure, the way Bruce explained it last year? I like that idea.
Say that again, George.
The way Bruce explained it is that they would, anybody come in would be advised that if they have anything they want to contribute tonight, that they need to put their name and address on the card, and give it to Colleen, or give it to somebody, and that, and they need to say what the topic is they want to, they want us to discuss, and we will bring them up to the table when that topic comes up.
And when, when the mayor's ready to hear it, because there's a staff presentation, and there's council discussion, all those things happen, because you don't want to have that interrupted, and then, okay, we've got some public comments here, and then you finish it up however you want.
Do they need to be come, come up to the table, or do they just go to the lectern?
They could go to the lectern, yeah, I think, yeah, I would say the lectern, because sometimes when you get people sitting down, they don't want to leave, you know, so I would. I would have them come over to the lectern, and everybody could see them, hear them, as Nancy's talking about, but if somebody's doing a presentation, I think we should have them at this end of the table talking that, that way, I think that's really good, publicly, I would have them go up to the dais.
The only challenge I see with this, George, is when you don't know that you have a concern about something, and all of a sudden you hear it out in our discussion, and you go, oh, crap, Mike's saying something stupid again.
No, they grab, no, they grab a card, they grab a card, and then they take it to Colleen, and then Colleen has it, but that controls it, and they, there isn't, there is a venue, there are ways to do it, and then.
And that could also allow me, I was just thinking of, if we had a big topic, and there are fifty people out there, and I get a pile of cards, I'm going to say, shuffle them, and we got five minutes.
And please don't repeat, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Okay, I think we can work with that.
Okay.
In that kind of situation, also, it could be that they're all saying the same thing, and Colleen could go quicker through them, and they'll get rid of the ones that are duplicates.
Well, they're just going to talk about the item, they're going to say, they're going to talk about item five C, and so they don't necessarily say what they're going to say, but that's, again, that's the.
That's going to take some training.
Yeah, yeah, that's going to be the art of being the mayor too, to go ahead and get them to not repeat from there. All right, thank you for indulging me with those.
Well, thank you.
None of my business, like, I guess it's just a little bit of my.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, is anybody else with any concerns about the rules and procedures? Long-term project financing. That is, M B, two B.
Mike, a number, potential projects, we want to call that, are going to require financing outside of just the ordinary general fund, as we go, so, you know, and under non-capital topics, we also have a topic called financing options and timing, that follows this, and we get into capital projects, it says infrastructure, five-year capital plan, so we're going to have capital needs, particularly if we talk elementary school purchase, or upgrading the water system, doing something with mass care, or affordable housing at Southland, to just our normal street maintenance, and all those things, I think we need to take a long-term view of our capital requirements, and not just go year by year, and say, oh, jeez, we can't do that this year, and next year, well, we can't do it that year either, because we don't have a long-term plan, so I guess I'm feeling that, and the water and sewer systems are a great example, I think, where it's a twenty-year program, take a look at what that is, and overlay on those things, and street upgrades, and, you know, our equipment replacement, a long-term plan, and not just go year by year, year. And once you get into long-term planning, you can then begin to address the timing, the amount, do we need, maybe we need twenty million dollars over the next twenty years, but when do we need it, and what is a good time to acquire it, and we, how do we draw it down, what kind of loans actually do we get, we talk a number of different kinds of bonds, should we subsidize this, or supplement it with grant applications, that's our likelihood, what happens if we don't get the grants? And to date, I haven't felt that we had any kind of a long-term financing plan to address all of our views on projects that we'd like to do, so I would say this, once we get through this planning process, we've identified the things we would like to do, then we take a long-term view of financing, looking at what our base incomes are, and the contingencies, and then say, do we need an additional two million dollars this year, by the end of year five, we need to have doubled that, that's the beginning of a plan, how do you raise that capital? So that's all I was trying to address, we, I feel that we don't have a long-term financing plan, but to, kind of, year by year, and quite often, I said, well, we can't, we don't have the money for that, rather than saying, here's something that the city needs, the public would like to have, approve it, and Bruce turned back, said, well, we don't have the money, and it doesn't need to be done.
Does that include the O-bond voting, or that kind of thing?
Anything, you know, where, where is the money coming from?
Here in our strategic plan on infrastructure, we say, by July first, twenty twenty-one, Kennedy Beach, we have two million dollars in reserve, well, we ain't going to have that unless we start now.
Exactly.
It's not, it's not going to just show up in twenty twenty-one, so we have to budget for those kind of things.
Buy lottery tickets, oh, there's big money there.
I think with what you're talking about, I see it in two different pieces, one is on the operating side, where we're talking about buying, you know, equipment, rolling stock, that sort of thing, and maybe budgeting some repairs of some kind, and then make sure that we, you know, that if we've got a replacement of a loader, you know, five years out, we put some money aside before we get there, and then on the other side, it's like the last topic here, is the capital, and then that, you know, the, what Lori and I are trying to do, is try to get the, really where we are from the general fund side, and then we can talk about, okay, now if you want to do projects, this is, with the general fund projects, now we can talk about what funds are really going to be available, what taxes are going to look like in the future, that sort of thing, to get into the bonds or whatever, and we're looking at refinancing the GO bonds, for example, for the utility projects we've already done, you know, those kind of things, so we're going to be looking at all of them, so I think that's two different parts.
Oh, they are, I, I consider the operating non-capital being, I'd call it short-term financing, but short-term, like, years, and, or you can place equipment, what streets need to be repaid, and we are doing that, I think, on a pretty good basis, because we have a pretty flexible allowance to do that, you know, when I even talk about, I'm talking long-term financing for infrastructure additions, the kind of projects that keep coming up, you know, what about property acquisition, buying more green space around the city, we don't have funds to do that, and yet there was some interest from the public in having that done, matter of fact, this public amazed me by authorizing the bonds to buy eight hundred acres to protect our watershed, very conscious about that.
Twelve boughs or something?
Yeah.
And I'm not surprised at all. And I'm not surprised at all, because the people here, you know, did that. But, yes, we absolutely have to do that, but from the staff standpoint, we're looking at it and we're saying, okay, we have to do, I don't even know if we're talking about prioritization, I think we're talking about triage, really, because we've got so many big things out there that we're really just kind of, you know, like, you've got so much to do, you just don't do anything? It's kind of like that sense, because where do you start until, you know, somebody says, no, that's the one, then it changes everything, or these two, then we can go ahead and make a plan, but right now we're six or eight. So, but I will make sure that we take a closer look on the operating side, in the short-term, as you call it, and make sure we've covered that well in the, in the budget this year. And then the discussion we're gonna have in a little bit in subsequent workshops, I think it's got narrowing down, what, how, what we're going to do, really, and then talk about the financing side.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's.
I could see, you know, maybe end of the year kind of thing, having a nap, kind of thing, of saying, here's all these dream projects that we want to do, and here's all these amounts that they might cost, and start then backtracking them to today, figuring out what can we start doing to create those funds. An example is the little bit that we put into the bridge fund all the time, which I think we're still doing. You know, I can't always keep track of whether we have or have not decided to keep doing those things. And sometimes it's in the budget, which I'm, doesn't show up well. But a nap that would help us, I think would be really helpful. I agree.
Well, and it's not just the money that we're going to be putting aside, but it's the going, are we gonna go for a vote on such and such? Or are we going to put some money aside and then go for a vote for the rest? Or, you know, are we gonna use revenue, try to get revenue bonds for such and such? That's the strategy that we need to give out.
And start searching for grants, because grants are running out there, kind of things, yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing that Laurie's working with the estate on, because there are grants for certain things, but.
But also, excuse me, on that, on that topic, certain ways we look at projects can determine whether there are different kinds of grants for them. Mass care site, if we look at it as a mass care site, you get homeland grants. If we look at it as a school site, you get school sites. I don't know which grants would be better. It's different, and it's literally the same kind of building. That kind of process thinking, I guess, is, yeah. One other little topic on this, just as an exercise, some time ago, about middle of last year, I was playing around with the budget, trying to check off all the things that I thought were discretionary, things that are not absolutely necessary for operations, but are things that the city council says these are important to us, and we want to pay for. It's an interesting exercise, and I would, I would ask everybody to try and do that, because, you know, example, the food bank, we give them money.
The what?
The food bank. We don't have to give them money, that's discretionary, you know? So if you start adding up those dollars that we have committed on our own, and may forever commit to, but they're still discretionary. And if you were looking at a situation where we were dire needed funds, I've talked to some other mayors from other communities that just have no funds at all, and yet they are willing to fund their library, because that's what they've committed to. And so these are some things that I think we need to, might, especially during our budgeting processes, to really look at if this is a priority or not, or if it's just something to think about as far as creating this map of our funding for, for the future. Might be little chunks of money that we can shift to other projects.
Yeah, there are those things that you absolutely have to do to fulfill your obligation, provide the basic services for life in this community. There are other things that you don't have to do unless you want to maintain the quality of life in this community, and the, show what type of community you are. And those things you don't have to do, like funding a library, or food bank, or giving the community grants, or, I think, tremendous thing. I haven't blown away that this town does that, I think, a lot of town, but you don't have to do it. So some things you have to say, well, what kind of village are we? And what do we have to do to maintain the character and the quality of this town? Even though you don't need it to provide, you don't need to do anything other than provide water, communication, and security.
What comes down to priority, you know, is that, what's the priority? If something else comes, comes forward, that's a higher priority, and we're faced with that tough decision, saying, oh gee, we can't do both these things, which is the most important?
Yeah, that's where you make that tough decision.
What I'm hearing is that there's a discussion about discretionary or mission critical. And mission critical would be, as you said, security, water, silver, streets, finance, you know, those kind of things that we have to do. And then there's discretionary, but what I'm saying discretionary, I prefer to call core value, because discretionary sounds like it's kind of flippant. But core value is something that the community's decided to focus on.
Right.
And then, but, so do we want to have a discussion on the difference of the two during the budget process, or just kind of keep that in mind while we're doing it? Because there's gonna be a lot of people gonna freak out when they find out that their favorites are on the chopping block, so.
I would say chopping block, I would say.
That's on the favor.
Yeah, I just feel that if you identify these things as mission critical, and these things as core value, core value, that's kind of a nice way to do it. And it helps to, and it might even help the budget committee be a little more focused, because they, oh, you know, we always get tangled up with certain, certain topics pretty quickly.
One place that might force some decisions would be, we need to build up a reserve or an escape route across the Golden Creek. But we don't, we haven't been doing that very rapidly, and because we take just what monies we have. So then you'd say, well, do we really need to be funding some of these core value items when we really have a critical need at some point in the future? So we back down on those, or maybe eliminate some to build up reserves. Some people say, well, geez, you're just building up reserves, and we have our immediate needs. It develops real, kind of gut-wrenching decisions.
I, I kind of have a theory that is different than the way people would probably run their own households, and that's that I am, I'm an advocate of using GO bonds for a project like a bridge, or something like that, so that the people today aren't funding a hundred percent of the benefit of the value of that asset that's gonna be here for fifty years. And so, you know, people don't like to borrow, they wanna go ahead and pay cash or whatever, but in order to pay cash, you may not have the bridge in time, or you may never get to build that bridge, but if you do it and you finance it over thirty years, everybody's gonna pay one thirtieth of it, and if you're here for five years, you'll pay, you know, your five thirtieths, but not a hundred percent. And it also allows you to do additional projects. So I mean, like, if you can, and you can finance them, and then you might be able to go ahead and do two or three things, then the amount that people will be paying today will be less than if you only did one of them. So I think that it's, it's a good tool, I don't think that we need to borrow like crazy, but I'm not, I think that when you're trying to plan, especially when you've got the projects that we've got listed here, that that's not a, I don't think that, again, personally, you may not want to do that, but to tell these people, okay, we're gonna, you're gonna fund a hundred percent, so we're gonna go ahead and raise your taxes two thousand percent, you know, that's what the number's gonna have to be to be able to build it in five years. That's one of the dilemmas we have with the tanks, is that we're not gonna have enough money to go ahead and do that in a time that if we've identified that that's probably the, one of the most critical items that we have in this town, and we're just kind of, you know, so, and we're working to look at the financing options for that, too.
But they have to be approved, the GO bonds have to be approved by the voters.
Right. No, I, I understand, but if they're not, if they wouldn't approve it, a GO bond, I'm not sure that we need to be putting the money aside to get to it and pay for it anyway. So there's a, there's a benefit to that. I think that it's very important that we are able to explain the value, because, like, with the meetings that we're gonna start having next week, we've been, you know, working, well, what are we really doing here? Well, number one, we're making sure that you, that you will have a reliable water source. And, you know, we don't have to do these projects, but you may not have a reliable water source, and, you know, what's, what's that inconvenience to you? The next thing is that you've got a long dead-end water line, pretty much, and so do you, we think we should have redundancy at this point. So we're talking about putting in another line over here, so if this line breaks here, we just pop some valves, and you still have water, because we have redundancy. And we're bringing in new things, like, I don't know if you have a, and I talked to Mike about this, but fire hydrants. You know, most people don't even know whether they have a fire hydrant, and most of them don't. And a fire hydrant on a four-inch line is pretty much useless, you need to have a six-inch line, so we're talking about upgrading the lines that come in front of your houses. So to me, that's not hard sell, when, you know, you're talking about that, and I hear you see the number. But, so if we're talking about the bridge, if we're talking about, you know, any of the other projects that are capital, you go out and you explain it, and then the community makes a decision on whether or not it's that important to them, and whether or not we've done a good job explaining it. So those, you're right, it has to go out, but I kind of like that mechanism, because you're really getting the flavor, but you have to do a good job explaining it.
Yeah, I, you know, the building up reserves, to me, is like saving for your car. Maybe you don't want to finance a new car.
Finance.
Christmas presents. So a reserve is for emergency, or to pay your property taxes at the end of the year. Those are things you go back to the household, I guess. But you don't save up for twenty years to buy a house.
Right, right.
You finance those things, and you leverage your dollars. It's the same thing, I said, there's some things we need to have a reserve contingency, or those short-term contingencies, probably, but things are gonna be done in the next couple of years, you know it's gonna be done in the next couple of years, you don't go out and bond something that's gonna be done, you know, that you can do out of your cash.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely not.
So, no, I, I think it's a wide approach. The, the bridge is an example, which, I don't know if I see anything going in reserve with a bridge, or do we got a grant, and there was a match, and you don't open it up. So have a reserve available, and that apparently presents itself, but to build up a reserve to build a new bridge, when it's easily a plan answerable.
Yeah.
If it's not important, and it spreads, and it, you know, making the people today pay for somebody's future benefit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you did, now might be a good time to take a break.
I agree. Tell those guys we're taking a break.
Got a bigger bladder than that.
Go wait and get some coffee.
Before we hit the next topic, to kind of dovetail on what we've been talking about, so much of what we want to do and what we're looking at, it's gonna cost money. So, and we don't have the money to do everything, obviously, so we almost need to kind of sit down and look at what's gonna cost money and prioritize it, to try and figure out.
I think that's kind of what the financial, long-term financing plan, map, talk is gonna be, is to help prioritize and, and see where money could come from.
Yeah, because looking at, you know, the next two topics, well, I guess the wifi and the undergrounding, those are, those are expenses, you know, where do they fall? In order to decide when and if we're gonna do them, we gotta decide how do they fit into our priorities in terms of money?
Well, let's prioritize the items, first, then we can prioritize, that will help prioritize the money. So why don't you jump right into events signage there?
Events signage, I'm on the Sandcastle Committee and other, and the Stormy Lodge Festival Committee, and when events come up, our signage is so restrictive that we can't even let the public know the event is happening without breaking the rules. So what I'm wondering, now that we are financing a lot of these events, and we're crippling the events with our, our signage ordinance, and I'm suggesting that we look at the possibility of having exceptions for events in terms of signage, some temporary signage wording that are applied to events, that would control what we would allow during an event like, you know, the yoga festival, or any other event that's getting sponsored, and not necessarily even being sponsored, just events that are bringing people to town, and people come into town and they don't even know they're going on, because we can't put any signs out. And it would require some, some type of ordinance change for that to happen. The way it's happening now, to some extent, is that people are doing it, and because it's only happened on a weekend, they're, you know, they're getting away with it, so to speak, but it's only natural that when you have an event, you know, that you gotta put some signs up to let people know as they come into town that this is what's going on this weekend in our town.
And we ran into that problem when we first started Farmer's Market. We had a heck of a time trying to figure out how to get signs up to let people know that it was happening, and I think there was some kind of variance so that we could put the sign up there at the parking lot, but otherwise, we really don't, we didn't have, we could, you know, put flyers up in windows, but that's pretty much all we could do at the time. But I guess my problem with some of the sign, I guess it would really have to be the type of sign that we allow, because these, you know, flags that they allow, like in Seaside, you know, in front of the stores, or these wavy things, colorful wavy things, I just can't see us doing that. So I, I think we really have to take a look at the type of sign that we would allow.
So I guess my question is, does this merit a work session agenda item relatively soon?
Yeah.
So that we can figure out how to move forward on it, and really hammer out maybe what we want, and see what other part of the community, or whether staff, not staff, maybe a subcommittee, I don't know, looking into it, and give us details and take it back, something like that.
Sure.
Other than Sandcastle, have there been others that asked for this?
Almost all the events.
Yeah, the, I think we had a situation at the, it wasn't the spring unveiling, when they were putting up flags and stuff all over town, and we're told basically to take them down. We even had people at the Farmer's Market this last summer started to put up flags around their booths and things, and, you know, they're just not allowed. So, yeah.
That's been a little issue for a long time, and maybe we do need to talk about it. How can we keep it within the quality of the town without being garish, and yet we can reach garish? Okay. I would say that's a topic that we can put on our list as important enough to talk about.
And schedule for a future workshop?
Yeah. Again, at the end of the day, we're gonna come up with a calendar, and this could be tagged as one of the ones that. Next item is public Wi-Fi. Again, George, you wanna?
Yeah, just, a lot of communities now are, you know, are giving Wi-Fi to, we're a small community, we could probably do it. To me, it kind of fits the, the feel of Cannon Beach, being a more progressive, you know, and our clients are, you know, I would know, we already have anybody who shows up in Cannon Beach as a visitor who doesn't look for the nearest Wi-Fi. So it's a service that we could offer, and it's fitting to the image of Cannon Beach, I think.
I disagree, but.
We're, we're probably about the size of most airports, maybe even smaller, you know.
Yeah, I disagree, is that technology changes so rapidly, we'll always be spending money trying to keep it up. People come here to vacation, you know, well, I'd be in favor of taking their cellphones away from them when they're on the beach, walking along looking at their cellphone to see what there is out there, but that's my own personal bias. But some shops do not want Wi-Fi, because people come in and just camp out in their shop, doing other business, and they can go to their hotel, or. And they could go to their hotel or, you know, but why that? Kind of just get away from your phones and Wi-Fi once in a while and enjoy life and nature. I don't get it. I don't know whether you need it and I would oppose it. And I think it's an unnecessary expense. And it's, to me, it's not in keeping with the village we like to talk about and the quaint shops and the unique restaurants and the coffee shops that are little meeting places. And then to just go to, y'all be honest, uh, didn't make sense. So, that's, that's my opinion.
Didn't John Fraser try to bring in some public Wi-Fi, um, some many years, several years ago? Maybe to the chamber and to the post office or somewhere. Anyway, I, I thought he tried to, he actually financed some public Wi-Fi, but I don't know whatever happened to that.
We actually had a presentation, I don't know if it's a while ago, 'cause Melissa was on board and maybe, um, from a proposal for public Wi-Fi. Rich strongly supported it at the time because it penciled out as a pretty substantial moneymaker for the city. I didn't, I was opposed to it basically for ten reasons, Mike is.
How do you make money off it?
I don't know, I didn't.
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship, um, all kinds.
It's advertising essentially for them.
It becomes a utility essentially, I mean, I guess you'd even tax it or something, I don't know.
Well, you're certain to charge access fees and that's what a lot of hotels do anymore. Is you go into a hotel, um, they all have Wi-Fi. Some of it's free, other times you log in, you pay, you know, ten, ten dollars or five dollars or eight dollars for your Wi-Fi access.
Well, thank you. So, I'm, I was opposed to it and I'm still kind of, I don't, you know, there's enough places around that you can get it if you have.
I wouldn't mind looking at it myself. I wouldn't mind discussing it in a work session, just to get some idea of what the possibilities are, what, if, you know, whether people here around want to see it or not.
Do we want to ask staff to do some research to find out? I really can't remember how that worked, but.
I wouldn't mind if that's, I don't want it to take too much time, but I'd, I'd like to be kind of interested in discussing it.
I, I, well, I haven't done the research, but I think you'll find many cities and towns that started this have abandoned it for various reasons. Can't say exactly what they were, but so if you want to do it, I would, I would suggest taking a look at experience of other towns.
Back before Wi-Fi, um, the city actually, John Williams had set this up, had a, uh, local phone number you could dial for dial-up and it was a free dial-up number. So.
That's a long time ago, wasn't it?
There is some precedence. I'd like to see anyone, uh, I don't know if John, it must have been when John was the city manager. I don't remember.
Might be, yeah.
Well, so we're going to call this an item possibly for a work session, but no prior.
Well, let's hear Brandon.
Well, I, I agree with Sam and Mike except that. I, I guess I just have to announce my bias is that I use my own computer. I've got a flip phone, you know, I use my own computer in my own home or I use it at the city hall this one. So, I don't have a very good frame of reference. But my overall feeling is that people are paying for, you know, their cell phones. They use them as computers and they're getting that service already. But I, I just don't know how important it is. And, and that's, that's my opinion. But I, I don't want to, you know, I guess whether I'm the swing vote for consensus or not, I'd, I'd be willing to look into it.
I know when I'm at, um, speaking of cell phones, when I'm at the information booth, I get people coming up to me all the time saying, "How come I can't get my cellphone to work?" And I'd say, "What carrier do you have?" I'll say Sprint and I'll say, "Sorry, unless you have Verizon or, or, uh, and I guess AT&amp;T now is in." So, at least we'll have AT&amp;T and then, um, the other one, there's another one that nobody uses anymore. Um, you know, that's, it's difficult for some people to use their cell phone around here, so.
Sorry, low priority.
Well, since it's just Nancy and I, I seem to want to pursue it, um, I'd say it's pretty low priority, so.
Okay. Well, just, let's see how it fits, maybe in the calendar sometime. Uh, but before we did, we'd have to have some research done beforehand, so. Undergrounding, George, that's your perennial topic?
Yeah, um, one of those things that if we had started putting a little bit of money away twenty years ago, we'd, we'd be there.
Oh, we just spent it already, George, on something else.
So, it's one of those, one of those things that, you know, I suppose we could geo-bond something like that. Um, but, um, you know, I guess I, I would be an advocate of us, you know, establishing a reserve and beginning to feed it, uh, a little every year. You know, there's a budget line item for a reserve for undergrounding. Otherwise, it would never happen.
I don't know where Jim sits on this, but Dan always had a policy that if there was maintenance under the street at a place where undergrounding could be affected, he was going to try and do it.
Right.
Um, but we're not going to plan any specifically just for underground projects.
Well, after the tsunami takes the entire downtown out and rebuild it, that'd be an ideal time to underground everything, well, this utility along with all the other utilities. If there were a major replacement of, of pipes along, I'm, I'm thinking Hemlock Street downtown, which I think.
That's, that's the first, you know, obviously the most likely place that we'd do first.
Because we already encourage undergrounding on any new residential, um, construction. But if we were replacing all that, I would say, well, at that point, take a hard look at, at undergrounding, uh, the power at the same time. I'm in favor of it, but I don't know how to get it done at any kind of reasonable expense unless you're having to do a lot of other work at the same time.
Well, you know, the last time we did undergrounding downtown was about ten or fifteen years ago and it happened, um, because Mike Clark was, um, was doing, uh, was tearing down Osborough's Grocery and was going to be rebuilding. And he was also, I think, doing some construction up by coast or whatever. And he was going to, they were going to be tearing up the street and Gary Smith, the electrician who's working for him, said, you know, "This would be a time to bury those poles." Uh, so Mike came to the city and said, "Listen, I'll pay half of the cost if, you know, you can pay for the other half." Um, I was on the council at that time and, um, and I suggested to the council that the council pay for half of the other half and that the business community pay for the other half of the other half. And that's how it ended up happening. Um, but there was money that it cost. If we had a reserve and had an opportunity, now we'd be in a position to, to make something happen like that. Could be a joint venture. But if we're never putting any money aside, we're never going to have any money for it. Um, and the reality is that the, the, we buried all the poles on the, on the west side of Hemlock on downtown at that time. It turns, it, and the reason that, that project wasn't very expensive compared to what it's going to be on the east side is that those weren't electric poles. Those were telephone poles, I think, on the, on that side of the street. All the poles on the west side, east side of the street are electric and that's a much more expensive progress, uh, process.
I know that Mike is proposing or intends to propose a couple more projects downtown and that he will, that will be part of his proposal in those small areas. So, it's not as big as, kind of ideas where it was before. So, I'm comfortable with saying we have an undergrounding policy of anything new, um, as much as possible. I just don't see undergrounding can, when I start thinking about all the other capital problems, projects that we have upcoming, I would rather focus on that. That's just my sense of it. Though I would love to get rid of that damn line in front of my gathering.
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of in the same place. I, I think it'd be great, but when you start looking, when you start allocating dollars, it's just going to be a pretty low priority.
Oh, it's so expensive, yeah. That makes it.
And I wonder, the water table there in downtown especially is so high. I wonder if you have to do something special because of that as well.
What is so high?
The water table is so high there.
That's why down there it would be so expensive. It was up on the presidential streets, actually, it's not too bad.
Yeah, what happens is that, um, when you're doing that project, you've got to run the, uh, the pumps all night and everything to de-water any area that you're working. So, and then I think there are some special precautions or installation you need to do to make those work.
Mike McCann was explaining to me once, new technology where they actually run a positive pressure air in the pipes.
Yeah.
So, that if water does leak into them, it gets squirreled back out, you know, things like that. Just, God, technologically, that's kind of.
You've got to keep the pump working all the time.
It's all working, yeah.
One thing that, and I know that George is talking about, you know, putting some money aside, but it's in communities where, uh, you say, "Well, let's go ahead and we'll, we'll do a bonding project down there," something like that. It's amazing how everybody kind of runs and takes sides, like the people that live in a community that it was done when they put it in, they don't want to pay for it for everybody else. Uh, are you going to do the downtown area only? And then, uh, you know, should Toledo pay? It just, it becomes very difficult to go ahead and set up that financing mechanism unless you have a grantor or, as you said, have some money set aside to do it. But trying to pull that together is just, um, you know.
Couldn't the downtown set up its own LID if they wanted it?
Yes.
I mean, if they wanted it that bad, they could do it, they could pay for it themselves and set up their own LID and we wouldn't have to worry about it.
There's another way to do it too. And this is, I could take no credit for it all, but I thought it was genius. Um, in Longwood, there was, there was just one main road that went down a very long narrow town. Everybody on the beach side obviously had a vested interest because they, everybody go, just walk out there. And they also needed the property protection for a beach. People on the other side didn't have a direct benefit, but they benefited from the fact there was a beach there. And so, they set up districts that the district that was on the beach side, um, they, they would have a vote and they would pay eighty percent of the construction cost. And then the other side would pay twenty percent. And so, even though you live in Toledo, it was a better experience for you if it was going to only be done, for example, in downtown, that when you go downtown, all that, you know, visual corruption is gone. So, my payment is less, but I'm willing to contribute to make that happen. So, I think that there might be some models that, you know, that we could look at to try to get, um, if it was going to be an isolated area.
So, it's essentially proportional bonding? Is that what you're doing?
It took, you know, to a degree because it was based, no, but what it was, it was two separate districts.
All right.
And so, the districts, there was a benefit to the, there was a high benefit to the district on this side and there was a low benefit on this side. Now, the way that they did the beach, I don't think, you know, we would want to do that here, but the beach question was, would you pay a hundred percent of the cost to do the project? And then on District B, as we called it, would you be willing to pay twenty percent of the cost of the project? And so, and the reason was more people lived in District B than lived in District A and District A didn't want to have District B have the ability to veto the project.
Oh, okay.
So, I think, but there's, but anyway, I think that there was a very clever way they did it and it always passed. District B always passed it in the eighty percent time. District B did it in the, you know, the sixty or seventy percent time. Um, because it wasn't that much money for them and it was, no beach is not necessarily good for them. So, anyway, there, there are models that we could do, but it's tricky. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we have one downtown, it is our downtown. Um, I don't think LID would ever work because if, if we can't afford it as a total community, how are we going to afford, you know, how is a small, you know, group of people going to afford it? Um, so.
Do you have any idea how much money you're talking about?
I don't. I just, I just know however much it is, it's more than we have. And then we're never having it unless we start putting money aside now. Um, you know, it's like saving for anything, you know, you got to start somewhere.
George, what I was, what I was suggesting, you know, maybe the number's not eighty, twenty. Um, that, you know, people, it would be a number that people would say, "Yeah, I would be willing to go ahead and do that to make downtown a prettier, more, more, nicer experience." So, I don't know what the numbers would be, but it is, I think it is possible to collect from everybody and, and do the work in a specific area.
Interesting.
So, it, it might be nice.
There may be some downtown beautification type grants too that can go to, to help that. Particularly if we did something else at the same time and, uh, we get more pedestrian friendly streets, wider trees, that sort of thing and, and roll that in with the overall downtown utilization.
There are things similar to the, um, what are they called? Urban, urban growth type, uh, thing.
Urban renewal, you tell me?
Urban renewal. There are things similar to that for, uh, the downtown project. And I've seen that at some conferences.
You could tie in to maybe the second street, that second street, uh, Parkway thing has been talked about, you know.
You mean the grid?
Well, they're talking about, uh, doing something at the end of Second and Large, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe that can be tied in, in that way.
What about the, the one-way grid project that, that's been?
That's coming up there.
So, same, not to, to, to get into that, but is that something that you could, if that were to occur, could undergrounding be a good time to do that?
There, turning it to a one-way grid, uh, is basically just changing the rule. Yeah, that's a traffic issue, that's not a, it won't be much capital, if any, involved in a few signs. Uh, but, you know, this would be capital. It's going to bring up, um, Seaside did what they called the million dollar project.
Oh, my God, yeah.
About, um, you know, thirty years ago and they, they, that's what they did. They totally tore up Broadway for two blocks. And rebuilt on Broadway, um, down in front of all the shops. And at that time, they buried all the wires and, you know, all the things that we would do if we had a, a, a project like that. And certainly that's when, when it would fit in if it hadn't been done before then. The question is, is that something we would do here? And that's something we certainly go for a geo-bond.
Uh, it was true, they got granted for that also. And that was the city streets type grant. So, there are things out there.
And, and to George's point, you know, using the example of Seaside, the, the project that makes me shut at night that's coming up is going to be doing the water line down Hemlock. And that's not going to be a, a, a small project. And so, because of the de-watering and those kind of things, we're going to be working a relatively wide area.
Which side of the street is that on?
I think it's on the, I believe it's on the east, but I'm not sure.
I think it's on the west. Is that the one that keeps breaking the west side, on the west side?
Sort of broken from your place, Sam.
Class hour.
Is that right in front of you?
I thought it's the west side.
Right in front of theater and over by Sam's down.
Maybe it's the west side, but there's, um, there will be some disruption during that time. And so, that might make the opportunity for the project come up maybe sooner than what we were talking about if it was going to be, you know, safer. It's possible to do it, but I think it would also, uh, make the project longer. Uh, because I don't even know how contracted that would be done. If we would have the contracts to, or do we pay the power company to, to bury theirs and the phone company and all that separately or how that works? But usually, they all don't want to work at the same time. So, power comes and, you know, the, the, and the water, that kind of thing.
Dan explaining it to me once that if you can coordinate and just lay the conduit.
Yeah.
And then the, the phone company or whoever can come in later, uh, when they have a chance and run the conduit.
I think the phone's already buried.
Phone's already, the problem is the west side is already done. So, in that sense, that might not work.
Yeah.
But I could see when we do start talking about that at the public works level to say, "Hey, include undergrounding if you can."
Mm-hmm.
That might be a work, way to do it, especially outside.
If, I'm not sure what has to be done with the water system. If it's to replace it, then just do all the replacements on the east side of the street. Put the whole thing in and then switch it over and just abandon the line in place on the east, on the west side. Without disturbing utilities.
Well, feet, all the feet then have to go back across the street.
You'd have to run a feed for every single customer across the street.
Which you'd have to do anyway, across the sidewalk.
I'm not sure, you have to look at how it was set up and how far over it is, no guarantee.
Well, you could just tie into the old feed, right? You wouldn't have to break the sidewalk up, you just tie into the old feed. Unless that feed also is, is, um, is replaced.
Remember, so you're going from the poles over to the buildings?
No, we're talking about water.
Oh, okay.
I might just say, we're getting a little too much on this one. Uh, it sounds like we wanna give the weeds on, so I would say future planning, maybe when Jim has signed.
More us down, George.
I'm breaking you guys down here at a time.
About your third term.
It only took it twelve years.
I got three hundred dollars in a fund.
So next item, advisory committees. I added that one at the time 'cause we had, so all instances where we've talked about advisory committees, I know we are going to be talking to the advisory committees, so I just wanted to know if there's any additional concerns and I wanna make sure that those are included in the calendar of work sessions.
As we're just on the same page, uh, one a month, correct?
I think so. We've got some of them already scheduled, right?
We have, um, tourism and arts scheduled for the twenty-third in a special work session. We have, uh, public work scheduled for the February thirteenth work session along with a lot of other things. And we have parks scheduled for the March work se, March thirteenth work session along with a lot of other things. And we hadn't really gone out with the others and just were not, no, we didn't know which ones were more of a priority.
Okay. So I just wanted to list it so we can make sure we had that on the calendar, which it is, so.
Do we have, are we gonna be talking about the heat prep committee? I don't see it on the calendar.
I think we will be at some point and that one is unique because it's, seems to be failing.
Well, my recommendation would be, as a council that created the committee, did its work. And we now have a lot of plans going, we have an emergency management team, we have all the medical reserve corps, we have, uh...